Thank you for joining us. This is the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners Zoom meeting for Tuesday, April 28. I am the Chair of the Board, Sean Flowerday. With me is Commissioner and Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioner Roma Ametson, Commissioner Deb Short, and Commissioner Krista Yocum. Please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, it'll be nice when we're back in the same room and can do that together. Okay, this meeting is subject to the Open Meetings Act, and there is a copy of it posted in the back of the room. Mr. Clerk, will you please begin?
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to discuss today's open meeting is available in Room 112. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Agenda item 100 minutes approved the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, April 21st, 2020.
And move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Sure.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number two, claims. Approval of all claims processed through April 28th, 2020. And want to remind you that it needs to be amended to include payroll, the payroll report ending on April 22nd.
I will move approval of the claims with the amendment to include payroll through April 22nd.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Best.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are approval of amendment to County Contract C dash 20, Gash 79 with non-spiney uniform, brown ear supplies sheriff's uniform clothing and accessories. The amendment is for a price increase where attachment paid. The expenditures will increase by $1,000 for the remainder of the contract term. The cost of county is not to exceed $18,000. Utility permit number 1966 aligning one certain Nebraska to replace existing fiber optic cable under South 96th Street along both sides of South Tull Road as part of the South Beltway project. There's no cost of county. Right away contracts with the following Harlem West Wing Trustee Harlem W. West Wing Living Trust 9334 West Van Broad Street in an amount of $1,687. Brian and Abby Quanky North 184th Street in Holbridge in an amount of $1,315.
I will move approval of the consent items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Yocum.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is new business. Four A is an agreement with Police One Academy for a software training program for Lancaster County Sheriff's Office deputies. The cost of county is $6,860.
And move approval.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is an agreement with Big Red Hotel Two for alternative housing for essential employees of Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, Lancaster County Department of Corrections, and the Lancaster County Youth Services Center at the Hilton Garden Inn. The cost of county will be $59 per night for employee utilizing the housing.
Move approval.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Um, I did just want to get on and say, um, we haven't gotten it signed by Big Red yet. Even this morning, we were just making a couple of changes. But I anticipate that will be signed today, so I'm asking you guys to actually sign it first, and then they'll be signing it later today. And as we discussed, um, there's going to be the funding available and they will actually be invoicing the Health Department directly. So that's kind of how that's going to be working. Um, but yes, that should be fully executed today.
Sounds good. Uh, yeah, Commissioner Short.
And I couldn't see an active link on that, so is that because the contract isn't complete yet?
Correct. Yes. Yeah. We've been, we were working up, yeah, like I said, even this morning on, um, do you have any specific questions on it?
No, no, just kind of wanted to read through it, but certainly trust your judgment.
Okay, yeah, sorry. I can send it to you.
I'll be down about an hour or so after we finish up this, uh, this call to sign any things. We'll be ready then, or should I wait until later in the day?
You can go ahead and sign it, and then once they sign it, we'll add in their signature page.
Okay, sounds good.
And there was no issues with regards to insurance or anything like that?
Nope, nothing.
Okay.
Okay, very good then. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Short.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Fourth fee is Human Resources Policy Bulletin 2020 dash four, Alternative Housing for Essential Employees in Lancaster County Sheriff's Office, Lancaster County Department of Corrections, and the Lancaster County Youth Services Center.
I would move approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Again, it wasn't an active link, so not really sure what it looks like, but does it refer to the item above it, Jen?
Um, so it doesn't specifically refer to that item, and that is actually something I was going to ask you guys about. We left it kind of open-ended, um, just in the event the contract with Hilton didn't work out and we had to find different housing or, um, but it does provide for housing, um, and it lays out the policy for that. Um, and then it kind of just discusses what charges we will pay for the $30 meal per DM that you guys set. The Clerk's office got a meal reimbursement form made up last week, so that's good to go. Um, so everything's ready to go with that policy. Uh, the only question I have is in the event that Big Red, oh, I keep saying Big Red, but they're the Hilton. In the event that they don't get that agreement signed today, the policy is supposed to go in effect today. But I wasn't sure if, no matter what, whether we were going to house people at the Hilton, whether you wanted that housing policy in place, no matter what. Um, I don't anticipate any issues getting it signed, but just in case it doesn't get signed until tomorrow, I just need to know whether you still want to go with forward with the housing policy or if it's directly related to the free housing from the hotel.
Okay, the, the free housing, I thought we're paying $15,900 per night.
Sorry, yes, sorry, yes.
Okay, and then, so could we make it, um, conditionally retroactive to today, should we have an employee in need of these services?
Um, so well, that's the kind of issue is if, for some, like I said, I don't anticipate any issues getting this signed, so I'm just, I mean, I'm bringing this up just in the rare possibility something does happen. But yeah, so that was my question is if for some reason the contract with Hilton doesn't go through, do you want me to hold off on the housing policy until we figure something else out, or we'll just figure something out and because you guys want to have the housing policy no matter where they're housed?
I would say yes to the second. We want the housing policy no matter where they are.
Okay.
Yeah, and I do agree with that. I think that we need to move forward with it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, um, do you need a motion from the Board on that, or is that clear enough direction?
Well, we have a motion.
No, I, I was asking about, about the, the additional direction. Does that need to be a formalized motion, Jen, or are you good with just direction from the Board? I, I have no objection.
Um, no, no, since you guys don't want to hold off, it's good. It's in effect today, once you guys approve it.
Okay, all right, then we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we will go ahead and, uh, call the roll, please.
Best.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a contract with Technion LLC to provide furniture, insulation, and related products and services. The term of the contract is May 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. The cost of county is not to exceed $100,000.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is a contract with Pioneer Overhead Door Aim for unit price residential and commercial overhead door repair and replacement. The cost of county is not to exceed $3,000.
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ametson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four F is a quitclaim deed from the County of Lancaster to Dolores Havelip, quitclaiming the county's interest of any and attract a land located in the east half of Northwest Porter, a section 33 township nine north range seven east of the sixth principal meridian Lancaster County, Nebraska.
Um, Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. Um, this is, and there's my shared screen, sorry about that. Um, this is really a deed to correct an error from about 17 years ago when we improved a county road. Um, and the description was, was written, so it, it wasn't correct. So instead of taking, um, an additional 17 feet plus our existing 33, um, what was defined for this lot was an additional 50 feet. Um, this created a cloud to the title. Um, this deed will correct the county's error. These things, of course, can, um, lay in wait for us for, for years, um, before a property is transferred and they're caught by a title company, and so, this will allow a Lancaster County resident to, to sell their home and, uh, and fit and clear their title, so it's, um, it might be important to, uh, to just two families today, but it's really important to them, and it, it is our error as the county, and we do need to correct it.
Well, I would move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Short.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Sean, may I ask a question? Is that the baboons we hear in your background?
Yep.
Okay. Gibbons.
But yes.
Okay, I, I kept thinking it was my internet screeching, so I kept trying to adjust something, so thank you.
Nope, nope, I live, I live 50 feet, oh, I mean, it's really, it's literally just across the street. The Zoom built the Gibbons exhibit right up to the, the fence, and so they're, they're extremely close to me.
Okay, well, you mentioned we might hear them. This is the first time, so, okay, thank you.
They're loud this morning. They're loud this morning. Today must be banana day. I don't know. So, yeah. So, never had, never had Gibbons on a county board meeting before, have you?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Next item, please, Mr. Clerk.
Four T is a contract for power underground in for concrete box coffers, F 78, F 84, and F 86. The work has been completed on or before December 4th, 2020. The cost of county is $1,598,518 and 46 cents.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. Um, so this is, um, a project that, uh, will help take three of our, um, well, two of our bridges and one, um, bridge that is less than 20 feet, um, off of our system. As you can see from the exhibit I put up here, um, these structures are scour critical, and, uh, this goes on with our mission to try to get scour critical structures off of, um, paved routes, which, um, will help improve the resiliency of our system, so we are looking forward to getting this project started this summer and, um, getting 14th Street, uh, clear of scour critical structures.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? And this, this is part of the, uh, this includes the floating bridge, right?
Well, um, actually, Sean, the, um, the floating bridge was, uh, Bridge C 91, um, up at, uh, about First Street and Raymond Road. And so the floating bridge floats no more, and it is, it is a beautiful new constructed bridge. Um, again, this will, um, get, these are WPA era bridges that were built on spread footings.
Right.
Previous engineer redecked them and raised them and really said that was a fix that should last about 20 years, and of course, that was, um, in the late 70s, early 80s, so we're well past.
We're 45 years into that now, so.
Yeah, we're, they're not in good shape. They're not in good shape.
Okay, all right, very good. Well, the floating bridge floats no more. Good job. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Best.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Yocum.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H has directed authorization to prudential retirement under the Corona, Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act to allow coronavirus-related distributions from the 457B deferred compensation plan in an amount not to exceed $25,000, and to not allow loans from either the 401A Lancaster County Employees Retirement Plan or the 457B deferred compensation plan.
I will move approval.
Second. Okay.
Uh, Sean, I would indicate we need to check an extra box on the coronavirus-related distributions. Needed to check the top box as well, even though it seems contradictory. That approves $100,000, but then we've checked the underneath box, so I'll go ahead and check that for your signature if that's the board's desire.
Very good. I don't, ah, there it is. I see what you're talking about. Yes.
Yeah, it was a little confusing the way they wrote that, but I think both boxes need to be checked.
Yeah, I would concur. Why did they bother even to put an amount in the top box? They should have left.
I don't know.
They should have left an amount out of the top box, um, and then just listed all three levels. That's needlessly confusing. Okay.
It is confusing, but the top boxes were worse agreeing to amend the plan, so that definitely needs to be checked.
Uh, I, 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 I see what you're saying. I agree with it. Good catch. Okay, uh, where are we? Do, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Short.
Yes.
Ametson.
Yes.
Flowerday.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number four, update on COVID-19 Lancaster County response, uh, Coronavirus Aid Fund Guidance for state, territorial, local, and title of governments under the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Recovery Act.
Yeah, Deb had asked me to put that on for general discussion.
Yeah. Um, and thank you, Carrie. Um, and since that time, um, and Roma, you probably have seen this email as well. John Cannon at NACO is, um, coordinating a survey that's going to go out to all 93 counties to start beginning this process of, uh, bringing a proposal to the governor for allocation. Um, I did ask Dennis to look into it. Right now, they're looking at law enforcement, actual physical equipment such as sneeze guards, cleaning equipment, election expenses. Um, and so I think they're starting with the counties that have representatives on the Board of Directors, just trying to get a feeling of what other costs are out there and how they may make a proposal.
Deb, you broke up at the very end there.
Oh, I said, so they can begin to lay some groundwork on behalf of counties on how we might, uh, suggest an, an allocation system, um, to the governor for the percentage of those funds that are allocated to counties. And I did see that also, Devin. I think that that was a good move to move that over to Dennis for information. Because.
Go ahead.
They need it by Friday, because they're obviously trying to move quickly.
I know no one here has any say over it or has any, you know, interest in, insight into it, and I get that Congress is moving fast. I think it's, I think it's ridiculous that they set the line, uh, at, at 500,000 population. Like, it, 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 that could have been, I absolutely agree that smaller counties, um, or smaller cities might not have the infrastructure to manage these funds effectively, but like, you, like, they could have set it at 150 and it would have been fine, right? Or 250 and it would have been fine. Like, it, it, I understand not wanting you to set it at 30,000, but it, five, but half a million's just, it just seems, seems ridiculous to me that, that, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, that, that Douglas County gets to, you know, it, it apportion their own funds how they best see fit and man, and, and manage it, and Lancaster County and the rest of us have to go on our knees to the state, so. But that's, no one's, no one here's fault.
Yeah.
Very good. Any other, uh, comments or insights into that? Oh, yeah, Carrie.
No, I have a different topic when you're ready to move on.
Um, go.
Uh, back on the coronavirus-related distributions, as soon as we notify Prudential, they can have that program up and running within two days. I'll also be talking to Julie Klassen today about them contacting our participants in the plan with the, uh, educational information, how it works. Uh, you know, the importance of preserving your pension funds, so, uh, they've agreed to do that. As we talked previously, there's about, uh, 532 people with a balance in our 457D and about 477 of them have email contacts with Prudential, so we should be able to get the word out pretty quickly.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing I have for coronavirus update is, uh, it, Director Lopez was hoping to brief the Board next, or this coming Thursday at our next meeting, so she's, she's trying to make it every Thursday meeting, and these days, she's been so busy, she's making it to about every other. But, but, but I think, I think we would all appreciate an update, so.
I agree. And then if I could ask one more question, and this one's for, um, Dan, or I guess Sean, you as well. Um, with regards to the request to the governor to allow, uh, hearings via telephone, Dan, do you have like a drop dead date we need to have an answer by?
The, the sooner the better, because we're in the planning process, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, we, Dan, Dan got, got the numbers over to, uh, to Joe, and he shot those off to Sean Kelly, and they're, I know, I know the request has gone out to, to the governor. They've been going back and forth on it, so.
Yeah, I think there's more stuff here they're going to forward today, so.
Yeah. Yep. That's all I had.
Hey, next is announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including department budget hearings via Zoom on Thursday, April 30th, 2020, at 8:30 a.m. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next original meeting on Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, at 9 a.m. via Zoom, with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can reach up 402-441-7447 or commission@lancaster NE dot gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV City. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE dot gov. Meetings are also streamed live on Link TV and can be viewed on YouTube.
I move adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Very good. We are adjourned.